I'm going to put this in the air. Claire, I see that you're on the meeting. Do you mind unmuting yourself and just letting us know that you can hear us, please?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you.
Are we ready, Mark? I'd like to thank everyone this evening for coming to the special meeting, December 13th. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, meeting's going to come to order. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Crummidge?
Here.
Councilmember Swift?
Here.
And Mayor Alves?
Here.
Mayor Alves, before we proceed tonight, I have prepared a statement which I would like to read to the community.
All right, you may read it. Mark, is there any objections to that?
Not from my office.
Oh, very good. Go ahead, Councilman Crummidge.
Thank you. So first of all, this evening, I would like to preface my statement by pointing out the role of leadership, as I see it up here on this council or in any leadership role, is to take care of those that are under your authority. This applies to anything, whether it be in business or in the military, your job is to not take advantage of, it's not to abuse your authority, and it's certainly not to mislead those under your authority. I'm going to make the following statement because I believe that a member of this community's rights have been violated. I believe that there has been a neglect of the authority of this council, and I believe it needs to be addressed. With that being said, I will read my prepared statement. I would like to thank all of you who are in attendance tonight, both in person and online. This is an exciting situation we find ourselves in. We have an open seat on this council, which must be filled in order for us to conduct regular business for the city of Escalon. This seat will hopefully be filled with a new voice, a new perspective, and a new energy that will see this town into a bright future. I want to set the scene by going over what events have brought us here this evening. On November 15th, 2021, Mayor Protam Jeff Leggero announced his intention to resign from the City Council of Escalon in order to pursue another position within Stanislaus County. His announcement meant that there would be an open seat on this council beginning at the end of the Escalon City Council meeting held on December 6th, 2021. This particular situation offered two courses of action for the Escalon City Council: one, to hold a special election for the seat, or two, to make an appointment. It is tradition within this city to appoint an individual rather than hold a special election. The justification for this is always that it will save the city some time and money. In hindsight, I do not believe this was the best course of action. However, at the December 6th meeting, we voted, myself included, to appoint the position rather than hold a special election. After Mayor Protam Jeff Leggero announced his intention to step down, it was the natural course of action of this council to begin seeking for an individual to fill his seat. However, the decision to make an appointment had not been legally established, as Jeff Leggero's seat would not become available until after the close of the next council meeting on December 6th, and after the council had voted to make an appointment rather than hold a special election. The dates here are important, so please pay attention to them. We, as the city council, had no legal right to appoint an individual to the open seat without due process or transparency to the community, or without consensus from the council, which could not be established without a vote of approval on December 6th. On November 18th, three days after Mayor Protam Jeff Leggero announced his intent to step down, the council received an email from an individual seeking to be considered for the position. On that same day, November 18th, Mayor Ed Alves responded to the individual personally, writing, quote, "Thank you for your interest. We believe we have an individual who we believe has accepted the position," end quote. This is where I find "we" have an issue. I, as a duly elected official of this council, had no idea of this decision by the mayor, and to my knowledge, neither did Vice Mayor Swift or Councilman Bellinger. I hope I am correct in this assumption. When I was made aware of this correspondence only four days ago, it brought to light the fact that the fix was in, and that this seat is being appointed without my knowledge or approval, and more significantly, without any regard for public input or direction. Mayor Ed Alves took it upon himself to select an individual on his own. This action violated not only due process and the integrity of this council, but more importantly, it violated the rights and trust of the citizens of Escalon to have a voice in who is to represent them. We are going to appoint someone tonight to this council who will hold the authority of an elected official. This person will wield significant power over this community and its direction. Furthermore, the individual who holds this seat will have a significant advantage in being elected to the seat in the 2022 election in November. The fact that our mayor has disregarded not only due process but has actively discouraged a valued member of this community from pursuing this open seat is highly disturbing to me, and should be to all members of this community. It portrays itself in the most egregious form of small-town politics, where the old guard of long-term politicians are unchecked and unchallenged to rule over a community with an almost dictatorial attitude. We, as a council, have the moral and ethical obligation to conduct business in an open and transparent format, always. This council should not be an old boys' club where, given the situation, an individual may acquire, without regard for public input, a position which holds authority over the very public it represents. I do not enjoy making a statement like this. And to be perfectly honest, I did not want to make it. But if I don't, who will? It is my job to protect the integrity of this council and to promote and uphold the democratic process whereby elected or appointed officials are not hand-picked behind closed doors. I cannot express to you how disappointed I am in this city's current leadership. We deserve better. With these facts in mind, I am calling for Mayor Ed Alves to recuse himself from the entirety of this voting process, as he has compromised the integrity of his office, and furthermore, I am calling for him to apologize to the community and this council for trying to fill the open seat without our knowledge or that of the community he has sworn to represent. And finally, to the people of Escalon, I urge you to make your voice heard tonight. Thank you.
All right, Councilman, thank you for your reading there. If we want to talk about this issue, we can, or what do we do?
Continue with the agenda.
Okay, let's move the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, will you recuse yourself tonight?
No, I will not.
Will you apologize to the community for trying to fill this seat without due process or transparency to the community?
All right, Councilman Crummidge, look, let's get one thing straight. Let's take care of our business and get it done. And then when we're done, if you want to sit down and debate what happened, I'd be happy to do it with you.
I tried to call you numerous times, and I believe your number has either been changed or something, but I tried to reach out to you before this meeting. I respect the fact and the reality of the Brown Act. I don't engage with council members outside of meetings. I don't want to make backdoor deals.
Okay, let's move on. All right, we've gone, we've accepted some written statements from those interested in the position that's going to be filled this evening. I want to thank you for all coming down and representing yourselves this evening. We've read through these, I've read through them. Has everyone read these?
Yes.
Okay, they're all very good. It's encouraging to see this much interest. In the past, we've not received much of any. But tonight, for some reason, and I'm proud of you guys, finally, this town's waking up and people are showing some interest in this position. I'm very proud of you guys for that. I'm hoping that whoever gets picked tonight doesn't discourage any one of you from not running when the seats open up for the next election, because there is a great group of people here that look like they'd be good candidates.
Mayor Alves, I had a question as to the email that you sent when you said, "We believe we have an individual who we believe has accepted the position." If that is the case, then there must be an individual who has already been approached and considered for the position and been approved for the position.
Let's go back up here. First of all, when you left to go to the military, we appointed Mr. Bellinger in the process with nobody's interest, and we appointed him, and nobody had a problem with it. Because technically, we're not required to have to do what we're doing this evening. We took this upon ourselves as a board because there seemed to be more interest than ever before, so we wanted to entertain that interest. As far as that email, at that point, we had a nominee, somebody brought up, somebody just like they did when Mr. Bellinger came on board, and we said, "Fine." We had no idea there'd just be this much interest, none.
Well, I had no idea of who you were talking about.
So we basically...
Who is "we"?
"We" being the council members who pay attention to what's going on.
Because I spoke to Vice Mayor Swift, and he had no idea who you were talking about. I assume Councilman Bellinger didn't, so I'm assuming this was somebody you picked on your own.
Actually, I didn't pick him. It was a recommendation.
Well, it said you believe they've accepted the position. What did you mean by that?
Well, I may have misstated that. What I meant to say is, we had somebody in mind, and that's what we did. Somebody had come up with a name, the guy sounded interested. We were interested in entertaining it. All right, now...
And I had another question for legal counsel. When an open seat becomes available before an election, to my understanding, there's two courses of action that a city council could take. They can vote to appoint, or they can vote to hold in a special election. I believe that a vote, one way or the other, has to take place. Am I correct in that?
Yes, and you participated in that vote at the last...
I did in December 6th, but the email was on November 18th, before we had voted to even approve the possibility of an appointment. Am I correct in that?
What's your question?
So...
And I was just before, thank you, Councilmember Crummidge, for looking my way and asking, because I was about to suggest to the mayor that you're out of order on this line of interrogatories, if you want to call it that.
I'm out of order in what way?
That you're speaking out of turn, if the mayor believes that he no longer wants this, what seems to be a personal debate at this point.
I think it's a public debate because it was responded to a member of the public for a public office.
Well, in that case, that should be agendized for another time.
Not this evening, when we are going to appoint somebody to the position.
Well, what's correct, that's correct. What's on the agenda for today is to hear from, discuss, and consider, and appoint a new council member.
Well, I respectfully disagree with you, and I believe it is my right to make known to the community what has transpired...
Please, you are out of order.
...so that they may make an informed decision and have...
You, sir, are out of order, and I'd appreciate it if you wouldn't stop and let's move forward on what our agenda has to do with. Our agenda is to pick, I picked someone this evening to replace the vacant seat by Vice Mayor, and I need to have any of those individuals this evening who came, who would like to speak about your wanting to be a councilman, you may do so at this time. If you'd like to come up and give us any kind of information about why it is you think you'd be the right person, you're more than welcome to. I read the information. All of these are good, every one of them. I mean, it's impressive to have this many people. I wish you guys would have showed up for more of these elections, because we could have used you. It's nice to have this group of people here this evening.
I would like to ask a question.
Councilman Crummidge, please.
I don't believe I'm out of order. I have a question.
And I'm going to get to that in a minute. Let's get to my end of this business first. So this evening, we're going to pick someone to replace this vacant seat. And the way we do that is, we let you speak. Since there's no one who wants to speak, we will entertain a motion based on the letters we got to replace and fill the vacant seat.
I've got some questions for each candidate, honestly.
Do you want to have them all come up and talk?
I have some questions, yes.
Then go right ahead.
I have a question also.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Bellinger.
That's what we want, I want. Yes, I would love to have someone come up, one of the candidates, and we'll go from there.
All right.
Let me get to your... I'll let you start off, and then I'll roll into the questions.
Okay, fantastic. Hello, gentlemen of the council and Escalon city staff. Allow me to reintroduce myself. My name is Melinda Walker, and I am a longtime resident of Escalon, and I'm seeking the appointment to the open seat on city council. Thank you for making the time to hear me out, regardless of the feeling of giving me the feeling to previously discouraging me to do so. As some of you are well aware, I have been preparing for this type of position for several years. My volunteer service began in an official capacity in 1998, and I've been active in the community ever since. I've served as both a leader and participant in several fundraising and service organizations with the goal of supporting our community's needs. I've served both as a professional and volunteer recreational athletics coach to ensure our communities' families continue to have developmental opportunities. I've served the community as an educator and mentor at Escalon Unified School District for the past 15 years. Additionally, I've been practicing real estate in the community for about four years, helping others try to navigate the recent housing environment. And I've been serving on the city's recreation commission since 2014. Educationally, my background's in economics. I hold a real estate license and have been licensed as an appraiser trainee for a neighboring county's assessor. I have experience reading contracts, interpreting numbers in raw data, charts and graphs, and investigating causation versus correlation. On a personal note, I value efficiency and transparency. I've gone ahead and refamiliarized myself with the city's finance and fiscal plans. I am excited about becoming part of the team to help move the community forward towards achieving the goals set forth by the city council's city manager adopted goals for this fiscal year. Ensuring our citizens have proper water access, sewer systems, and housing for seniors and beyond is imperative for a thriving community. Addressing our depreciated infrastructure is a long, continuous journey that takes careful implementation. I'm hopeful about some of the opportunities that have been presented to bring surface water into the community to diversify our water systems, which has the potential to make sure that we can provide those services in the long term. Additional priorities that deserve our attention are the continuous process of modernizing the resources available to our police force and other emergency services, as well as assessing and reacting to the ever-changing commerce climate. Ultimately, I want to be a part of the team to help cultivate a safe place to live, work, play, and grow in Escalon. As I wrap this up, I want to thank you once again for the opportunity to speak today. I have received an outpouring of support from the community members these past weeks, for which I cannot express my gratitude enough. You have a very difficult decision to make tonight. There are several passionate candidates to choose from. I ask you to please choose a candidate who is committed to moving the community forward. I do my research, I stay in touch with the community, I bring new ideas and a new perspective to the table, and I view myself as an advocate for our citizens. I have a history of service for our community, but more importantly, I have a future of service for our community. I welcome any questions that you may have moving forward, and once again, thank you for your time.
Okay, I can ask you questions down while you're here, if you make it easy. Just a couple of questions. Being that I haven't been on the council that long, I know you've been on the REIT committee since 2014.
Yes.
Can you discuss or talk about anything that you, in your experience there, that you've spearheaded, changes or new programs, new processes, or anything like that that's going on in that REIT committee from the 2014 till now?
Sure, we can move backwards, I guess. Most recently, in programs, we've brought the flag football program to our community. We saw that Rippon had theirs, and they were pulling from our kids, and then we had that program thrive, actually, and get bigger and bigger every year. In terms of facilities, the, right before COVID, it was right before COVID hit, we had a bunch of upgrades done to Hogan Ennis Field, which I had been asking for new dirt for a couple of years. So we finally got the new dirt granted to us. We finally got the fences for the outfield, which was a safety issue for several years, if you remember, people walking through the field there. So that's most recent. I mean, we are, we review programs that come through. So we've also brought the new dog training. We've approved that into our town. We've had the karate come through, and they're doing a great job as well. And then, you know, the things that we ask for and speak about, a lot of times, I'm told, when we have funds available, and so a lot of times, that will go forgotten, but then council usually addresses some of those really important issues. And we finally got the bathroom at Hogan Ennis Field being replaced, not just refurbished, which was a mistake a few years ago to go ahead and spend the money to refurbish that. So finally, we did get that going into replacement.
And secondarily, where do you stand on the current growth of this town? What are your feelings on growth within the community?
I feel like, for housing in general, I know we're working on the senior housing program, I do feel, or senior housing development, and I feel like pushing that forward actually will open up some other housing opportunities, because the people that are in those senior, in houses that are senior, that would be moving out into the senior housing, will actually open up a whole bunch of real estate for others to grow, and we can have new families and younger families grow in. Now, at that point, we'll have to assess where we're at. There's a lot of funding opportunities that do come with new home developments coming in and new housing in that sort. Those are the things and how I would approach that.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Yes. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for submitting your statement. What are some particular frustrations you have with the city right now that you feel you would be a good fit to resolve?
Well, I do think that we need to address the fact that we'll go into the recreation and some of the recreation facilities that we have, and bring up the fact that once these public school campuses closed off to our community members, we lost a whole bunch of access to a lot of facilities that need to be addressed. We lost four softball fields, tennis courts, basketball courts, most recently, a swimming pool. We've lost acres of play space and safe walking space for both adults and children in our community. I think that's one thing that probably needs to be addressed, is putting in that type of, or at least talking about that. I used, you know, I used to play at Albertel and Dent, and my family felt very safe that I was there, and I skate, that's where I used to skate and play and all of that. So all of those things, that probably needs to be addressed, at least on the recreation side. I'm sure I could have another list of things if you give me a little bit more time to collect my thoughts.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there someone else who'd like to come up this evening and talk about their interest in why they're doing this this evening? Can I have your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Casey Ryan. I'm going to just read the statement that I prepared. So, "Council members, city staff, officials, and fellow citizens, I respectfully ask you to consider me for the vacant city council appointment. I'm not a politician, nor do I have political aspirations. I'm simply a person who loves this community and enjoys living in a city that reflects my values. My vote nor my voice seem to mean much in the greater politics of our state. But yet, perhaps by serving alongside this city council, we can ensure that Escalon is a place that our children will want to raise their families. I decided to put my name forward for this vacant seat because, as I survey the current political landscape, there's a great need for men and women of integrity and common sense to get involved, not more politicians. I have been encouraged to see some other men that I know and respect willing to put their names forward to serve our community in this way as well. While the community's need is for honest and willing citizens, and that's what caused me to step forward in this process, I feel my usefulness to the council goes beyond this. Previously, I spent seven years working at E&amp;J Gala Winery in the research department, where I developed skills in process evaluation and evaluating processes and protocols, in hopes of growing grapes more efficiently. In addition, I have served on the Oversight Board at Heritage Church for several years, and through these experiences, I have gained insight that I have, that I feel will be valuable to the city. The city council has done a great job of leading our community for many years. And the reason that I'm putting my name forward for this open seat is not that I think that things need to change, but that we need to have people that are willing to see to the long-term stability of our city. I believe that my experience and insights can add value to the council, and I would represent the views of the majority of Escalon citizens. I appreciate your consideration."
I've got a couple of questions for you, Casey.
Sure.
First question is, how'd you find out about the process?
I heard about it from Councilman Crummidge.
Thank you. Next question. If this evening you're not selected, would you consider running at the next election?
I will consider it.
Okay. What's the likelihood of it?
Well, I have three young children, and we're currently in the adoption process. And it will be a, you know, looking forward, the next year, I feel like I can make a commitment to the city. You know, when that, or when, come November, I will evaluate to see, you know, in the foreseeable future, what my time commitments will, you know, what level I can commit to the city.
Yeah.
But my family does, you know, take precedence.
Well, I'm glad to see both of the candidates who spoke this evening step up. It's nice to see some people with interest in running for the council. We've never had this much interest before, and I'm excited about it. And I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you spoke. Thank you.
Yep.
Couple of questions from me. Congrats on being part of the adoption process. That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Hats off to you. You talked about being on the Oversight Board at the Heritage Church. Can you explain a little bit more about your involvement with that and how that works?
Yeah. So I actually came on to the board at a very turbulent time at the church. We were without a pastor, and our congregation, or our denomination, had been taking a hard slide away from the traditional values of the denomination. And so, you know, we do a lot to make sure that the budget is in order, that staffing appointments are going well. We kind of oversee the day-to-day operations of the church, especially when there is no pastor in place. And we also represent, we're a congregational church, and so we represent the views of the congregation as elected board members. But during this time, when I was serving, one of the things that we had to consider was the potential of leaving our denomination. And I served on the board that did decide. After evaluating all the evidence and the direction that the denomination was going, we decided that it was in the church's best interest to lead the denomination, which actually allowed us to find a pastoral candidate that we felt represented our church and the values of our community. And we brought him in, and things have been going very well at our church since then. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much. Next question, I'm probably going to end up just, I'll ask that of every candidate. Where do you stand on growth, building moratoriums and the like within the city of Escalon?
You know, it's a topic that comes up a lot, and it's not one that I really have spent a lot of time getting into the weeds on moratoriums and things like that. Do I think that our city could grow a little bit? Yeah, I think so. I think a lot of our infrastructure is a little dated. When I get bills in the mail saying, oh, we've got to raise water prices and to cover the costs of new infrastructure and things like that, that's frustrating as a citizen. But do I pretend to have the right answer? No. I think that, you know, these things, all these things should be evaluated. I wish that some of the things, you know, prices of some of the services offered in the community, like, you have to go to Modesto if you want to get your oil changed for a decent price. Like, that's kind of annoying, you know? I think that we should try to make Escalon an attractive place to do business, to raise families, to get good... families, to get good people into our community. And I recognize that the city council has parameters as to what they can and cannot do, and so I don't question decisions that have been made, but I think that these things should always be evaluated. And that's one thing that I learned at Gallo and Research is a model of constant improvement. You should constantly be looking at ways that you can improve yourself and grow, so.
Thank you.
Robert, any more?
No.
Thank you.
Casey, did I ever, after I encouraged you to, you know, seek out the possibility of pursuing this open seat, did I ever once indicate that the seat had already been filled and you should no longer pursue it?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Yep, thank you.
Melinda, question for you. How did you find out about the process?
I didn't. So I found out that Jeff Leggero was stepping down.
Okay.
And I watched, I watched the meetings.
Okay. Oh, you do watch the meetings?
What's that?
You watch the meetings on internet?
I watch it on YouTube.
Good for you.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm pretty, I've been watching him probably for the past year or so, I try and stay pretty current. And so I saw that he was stepping down, and at that point, I figured there would be an open seat, honestly.
Good for you.
Yeah, and so when Dave had been appointed, to me, it had been a surprise. Like, I didn't even realize there was gonna be an open seat. And so when I had found that out, I knew to stay a little bit more aware of the things that happen like that, because if I had known at that point that there was an open seat, I might have put in my letter at that time, so.
Interesting.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't know that there was a process and I was just kinda hoping that somebody would hear me out.
It's interesting because technically, we don't normally do this type of a hearing. We pick somebody and it's over. But it's good to know, what I'm learning tonight from individuals out there, like yourself, who was basically aware enough, which is important.
Yeah, there weren't any postings, correct?
No, we don't post it.
No, no. Oh, okay.
And that's why. And when I spoke with you, that's why, because the process was already, at that point, what we used to do, but then we decided to go out and put it out. That's the only reason. I didn't mean to slight you ever.
Oh, no, and I don't feel that, that's why it's been since November 19th, and this didn't come up until December 6th.
That's fine.
Honestly, when I came here last Monday, I thought that the person that you had told me that you had offered it to was going to be appointed at that night.
Yeah.
And that was what I, the impression that I had gotten. So I was very pleased to be called up and given the opportunity last Monday to come speak, and I'm blessed to be here today.
I have another question for you. If tonight you're not picked, would you run come November?
I am seriously considering it.
You are considering it, but what would you say would be, 50%, 100%?
I would seriously consider it. I don't have a number for you.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious where you're at with it. I'm glad to see this much interest. I've just never seen it before. This is the first time in 27 years I've been on this council, I've never seen this many people interested, and I'm glad.
But it may be the first time that you put a posting out to the effect that please get me.
We have elections every four years.
Right.
And those things are posted, I mean, we always put it out, but yet I've never seen this much interest before.
There's a little bit of cost involved with running.
Oh, absolutely.
And so there's not as much of a barrier here as costs go.
Absolutely.
And I can, I can see why you would have so much interest.
Well, now I understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, very good. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like, oh, here we go, we got somebody right here. Could you have your name, please?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mike Radford. Pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. As the others, I'll also read my prepared statement, maybe add a little more, and be open for questions. Thank you. As a resident of Escalon for over 25 years, I'm excited to submit my name for consideration for the city council appointment. As a resident of council, I tend to represent our community, putting concerns of the city and those who call Escalon home first. By focusing on the future, I will serve by listening, keeping an open mind, remaining transparent, and respectful. I'm married, I have the privilege of raising home all three of my children here in Escalon. My entire career has been serving the public. I was honored to work as a deputy sheriff for Stanislaus County for 25 years, retiring in 2018. For five of those years, I served the city of Waterford as the chief of police services, working in partnership with the city manager, the council, successfully building trust between the city and its law enforcement agency. I have a BS in police management. I'm a proud graduate of the FBI National Academy. I currently work for the state of California, developing and certifying law enforcement training. And in my current employment, I'm responsible for approximately $12 million, $12 million in programs ran through a collaborative effort presented across the state of California. I've shown the ability to accurately plan, execute, manage detailed budgets, contracts, with ever competing responsibilities and requirements. Some side note items that I've been really proud to be part of is a longstanding board member of the Stanislaus County Health Foundation, where we focus on child literacy and instilling a foundation of physician networks all throughout the Stanislaus, San Joaquin, and Merced County area. Concerns I'll bring to the position will be, but are definitely not limited to, safe and vital neighborhoods, fiscal responsibility, ensuring proper dependable services and infrastructure, all while promoting the city of Escalon and making quality of life a priority. My years of law enforcement experience at the management level have helped me understand the key to a safe community is important, is an important partnership with the community. My years with the city of Waterford also afforded me valuable experience working directly with multiple city managers, mayors, councilmen, and numerous stakeholders within our community. Just one of our great accomplishments that I was very proud of was, we actually did establish funding, was able to bring a 1.75 million police station to the city of Waterford just before I was, before I retired. Didn't even get to sit in it, but it was nice. Though many of these thoughts and beliefs maybe, and I'm sure are shared by numerous candidates that are all here, what I can guarantee is I will bring an innovative mindset with a commitment to better, to the betterment of the city and those that call Escalon home. I could promise you that we can constructively disagree. I will never lack the courage to make a difficult decision that puts this city and the community first. And it's through vision, cooperation, and action that I look forward to building a strong community.
Good enough, David.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll just start off with the growth question. Basically, where do you stand on where you think the city's size is at currently, where you foresee the future of our town, and that sort of thing? Where you stand?
I love the size of our city. I would like to say no to any growth with the caveat that it really should be looked at as a case-by-case basis. Weighing the needs of the city, what it can do to better our city as a whole, and at the same time, making sure that we could establish good business-based infrastructures that can, that can handle any type of influx that might be, we might see. I'd hate to see something like a Village One out of Modesto, or the issues that we see in Antica from just sporadic growth, they don't seem to control. Most people, including myself, 30 years ago, we moved to Escalon for the controlled growth. We love the small-town feel, even though we have access to just about any type of resource, places to shop, within a decent amount of distance. So unless it was some sort of, there was some sort of, you know, opportunity that really showed that this can take Escalon to another level, yet still keep with that small-town feel, it needs to be that case-by-case basis. We come here for this type of feeling, and that's how, my belief.
Okay. And then, just real quick, with your experience being chief down in Waterford there, if we were to talk to any of the city folks there that have worked with you, what do you think they might tell us about you that we may not know now?
Fantastic. No, I was very, very proud and honored to take the position there in Waterford. It was a challenge, there was some destroyed trust from some incidents before I came, and it was my goal to build the trust back with not only the community, but with business base, with faith base, and the schools. By the time I left, I felt that I succeeded in building that trust, I felt that there was a measurable bit of success by the trust that the city and the council was able to help purchase this massive building, which was something that had never been done, they never thought would be done. And I would really encourage and enjoy, you know, to hear what any of the councilmen, mayors, city managers that I work with would say. I had absolutely outstanding relationships with all of them.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions for you. How'd you find out about the candidates for the replacement of the candidate? How'd you find out?
Saw it through your online, I saw it online for sure, but I speak quite a bit to Jeff Leggero, I've known each other for quite a long time.
Okay, so you knew Jeff.
And he had told me of his intent to run for DA.
District attorney.
Yeah, very good. And so I knew that there'd be an opening, and so I was...
Let me ask you a question. If you don't get selected this evening, would you run come November?
I'm strongly, strongly believing that I will. You know, as things move forward, you never know what a one-year will be, but my intent would be to run. I've assisted by, assisted a good friend in Oakdale through a campaign, and it's his turn to pay me back.
Okay, there you go. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else?
My name's Dr. Andrew Hagan. Thank you. My name's Dr. Andrew Hagan. I'm also not a politician myself. I just threw my hat in the ring because I care about what's best for our community. And doing so, you know, my goal ultimately is to keep the same kind of vibe we have as far as the community itself is concerned, obviously address efficiencies that need to be addressed. And then there are, you know, as far as like growth, I think bringing the right businesses in obviously is gonna help as far as the sales tax and the things versus property tax stuff where you're looking at more, you know, one-time type money grab, so to speak, for the city. And then after that, a lot of times you're having to deal with infrastructure stuff that goes along with it. So the growth, I think, has to be well thought out as far, as far as where you're gonna go with it. If there's gonna be growth, in other words, does it fit our current infrastructure? And if so, is it laid out in the proper way that our city can, you know, not have areas of town where, you know, it's real tight, you can't drive through, things like that? I mean, it's gotta be, I think, well thought out, that kind of stuff. Outside of that, you know, obviously, I found out about this position from Jeff. I heard he was, you know, running obviously for DA, so I decided to kind of start showing up the meetings and kind of seeing where this would go. My game plan, whether I'm picked tonight or not, is to run, short of like some random illness I'm not aware of yet. That would be my game plan. Outside of that, I can't think of anything else I love more than this town and the people in it. So that's where, that's where I am as a citizen and a person looking to sit in that seat over there.
Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Well, he answered both of my questions and everything he just said. What I was gonna ask.
Yeah. So you're telling us basically, no matter what happens this evening, you would run?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening?
Mayor and council, the reason I submitted my name is I know this is a short-term appointment, and I assure you, I have no intent to run for a two-year, or a four-year...
I love it.
...term again. My thinking through this process was that you're gonna lose Jeff, a valuable, knowledgeable member of the council. Having spent 12 years on the council, I thought I could possibly hit the ground running and not have the learning curve that some will go through. But I assure you, after listening to the council applicants tonight, there, you have some excellent...
Yes.
...qualified candidates out here. If you don't pick me, I assure you, you will not hurt my feelings. But, you know, I kind of sympathize with you because you have so many good candidates and you only get to select one.
Yeah. Well, that's what November's all about.
That's what November's about. And there you go, I'm not running.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks a lot.
Other public comments?
Mr., is there?
Yes.
Okay, yes, but before we start public comment, is there anyone else this evening who came, who is interested in this position, who'd like to speak? Please do so.
My name is Sherri Hill.
Okay.
Yes, and I submitted because I'm retired and I have nothing better to do. I'm kidding. I'm just kidding. I love this community. I was born and raised in a very small community over six decades ago, I'm sorry, that was just as small as Escalon, and I love the size of it. I love the community, and so I wanted to give and serve the community and give back in whatever way I can. Tonight, listening to candidates, I have to say that I would just as soon ask you to remove my name from your list. There are a couple candidates out here that said that they would run in November, and if there are open seats, I would support both of you. Absolutely would support both of them.
Thank you.
And would be happy to work with them to succeed and get on this council and to help the council in any way I can, not necessarily in a seat. I would like to say a word on behalf of Dr. Andy Hagan.
Sure.
And he was not expecting this. I wasn't either. I have to say that if we're looking for a person of integrity, I've had personal instances with Dr. Hagan in the last 10 years that have gone above and beyond him being a veterinarian. I have seen, you can see how a person talks to people who are beneath him in the community that he doesn't know, that he doesn't necessarily know that, you know, you'll see him again. I've seen him out and about when he wasn't aware of my presence, but I've also spoken to him, obviously, as a vet. His care for one of my animals in particular, when he barely knew me, we were brand new, was above and beyond. So what I'm saying to you is, if there's a situation that comes before this council, that man is going to search, he's gonna research, he's gonna dig, and he's gonna find the answer. And if he doesn't find the answer, I bet he knows somebody who does, or knows how to talk to somebody who does. He's a good team player as well as a good leader. I just cannot imagine you filling a spot with someone that has any less integrity than that.
Thank you, Sherri.
So I would ask that you would really consider. He's a young man, obviously, he had the opportunity to leave this small community and chose to come back. This is where he was raised. This is where he's raising his family. This is, his whole heart and soul is in this community, and that's very evident if you've seen him or spoken to him at any point in time. So I respectfully withdraw my name and ask that you would consider.
Thank you.
Dr. Handy.
Let me ask you a question while we have you here. You said you're interested in the city. Would you be interested in serving on any committees and stuff?
Possibly.
Possibly. Okay.
It would depend on the committee. It would depend on, you know, what, if I thought I had the skill that would help and benefit.
Well, starts, yeah, some of us gotta be interested, that helps. And the fact that you're...
If you let me know the committee, I'll let you know.
The fact that you're here tonight tells me that you have interest, and that's important. And I appreciate your comments and your interest, and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else who'd like to speak before we move on to some comments here? Seeing no one coming, I would accept the comments now. Please come to the podium and give us your name if you will.
Good evening, council. Kurt Danziger, past member of the city planning commission, frequent member, if not all the time, a member of the community that comes and listens to city council. I agree with you 100%, Peter. You're right on the money. One of the things about the Robert E. Brown Act is smell test. If something doesn't smell right, then that's a problem. I was gonna come here tonight and say, I think anybody that was associated with that should recuse themselves, and this, we should consider having an election right now. But I don't think we're gonna go there. I'm not, I've been here around the block a few times. So I've read all of these as well. I have reached out to Melinda Walker, who I fully support for many reasons. One, you can see in her prepared statement, she's eloquent, she's well-rounded, and she's a woman. We gotta get rid of this old boy network. And I think it's time for you guys to agree that somebody different, with a different set of mindset, comes on this city council. I appreciate everybody that showed up here tonight, it shows a great interest, and I hope you do run in less than a year's time. How many seats are open, Dominique? Two?
Four.
Coming up in the election, there will be three seats for a...
Coming up in the election, there will be three seats for a four-year term and one seat for a two-year term.
There you go. So, there's the opportunities. In the interim, and I appreciate Walt Merkin for his service as the police chief and as City Council member and mayor, but it's time to put somebody else in there, and there's no time like now to learn. And there's nothing really pressing at this point in time. The next big thing is going to be the budget, and it'd be good to have somebody there that's associated with the community as Melinda is, and I throw my full support behind her, and hope you do consider that, because we haven't had a woman here since Lynn Gentry, and that's been a few decades. Time to up our game here. Thank you.
All right, Kurt, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, Sean Strowman. I want to reiterate what Mr. Danziger said. Kudos to you, Councilman Crummick, for having the guts to stand up. And as a taxpayer, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, there was a term that's been used by all the council members tonight, and I really want you to pay attention to that term. And that term is "used to." And as you can see, I mean, I don't know Mr. Radford or Ms. Hill. I've publicly worked with Mr. Merkin, and I want to second, Mr. Merkin, thanks for all of your help to support this community. But really, what you're faced with tonight is the "used to" versus the "future." And I can tell for certain, so I was going to put my name in the ring, and then I decided to back out because my family comes first, and the Cub Scouts come second. My wife would say sometimes that order's reversed, but my family comes first, and I know I couldn't publicly sit on the dais and give that position the energy that I needed. Let's go back to the "used to." I can say for certain that the "used to" is, that's not going to work anymore in Escalon. I consider myself a younger person, and I can tell you for certain that Casey and Dr. Andy are neighbors of mine. I could throw a rock and hit both of their houses. I won't. But it was really inviting, really encouraging to see them say, "Yeah, we want to get involved." "Yeah, we want to get involved." And Melinda, I've kind of grown to know and respect through our discussions regarding the skate park, which that's another City Council meeting down the road. Really, what you're faced with is new school, and no offense to Mayor Alves or Vice Mayor Swift, but really going from old school to new school. And now what you're seeing is you're seeing young folks like myself, families that say, "Hey, we really care. Escalon really matters." I wouldn't want to be up in that position to make that decision, but I want to publicly lend my support to Casey, to Dr. Andy, and to Melinda, because all three of them, and I don't know you, Mr. Radford, so no offense, but all three of them would make an awesome candidate. And not to jump on Mr. Danziger's bandwagon, but I think it's time for a woman. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen. Just here to lend my support to Mr. Casey Ryan. I'm a teacher, community member here, coach, and I interact with Mr. Ryan in multiple facets, whether it's through our community church, the Heritage Church, and seeing him lead our youth pastor program and interact with the adults of that congregation, being a younger gentleman, and the respect that he has earned and that he garners from our large congregation is impressive. And the thing that hits me the most with Mr. Casey is the fact that the way he works with our youth, you know, he goes to the high school and middle school and runs those youth programs, he does the FCA at lunchtime, and I'm just here to give my support and vote of confidence for a person that loves this town and the values of this community that wants to see it better, better than it is, and that progress is not something that we should be afraid of. It was impressive to see all of you guys come up here and give your statements, because, you know, you could feel the love that every single one of these people had. And, you know, I don't think that there's a bad choice out there. I would say that you'd never vote for someone because they're from Escalon, or that they are male or female, or they've got this degree or that degree. You vote for the best candidate. And in my opinion, seeing the interactions with our community, Mr. Ryan is that individual.
Congratulations on your season.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Council, my name is Peggy Rocha. I think it's wonderful, just as you said, Mayor Alves, that all these people are interested. I think it's amazing that we have this much interest, because we've been to a lot of these council meetings, we've never seen so many people get so excited about running for City Council. So, this is wonderful, and I hope every one of these people that came up to speak tonight, I hope that they all run in November, because I think it's just great news. So, before I found out that Walt and Casey and Andy and...
Melinda.
Well, I knew Melinda too, but I was going to say the other candidate. So, I know all of the candidates except this Mike, yes. So, but before I learned at the last council meeting that they were all going to throw their hat in the ring, I had heard after Jeff was going to resign, I saw Melinda at Veterans Day thing at the community center, and she expressed her interest. So, I was very, very excited. I think that most of us, or many of us, would agree that diversity is really a strength for any position like this, and the City Council, you know, has, just like Mr. Danziger said, has looked pretty much the same for a long, long time. I think that it's really time for this city to have a woman on the council, and that doesn't mean that all the other candidates would not do a wonderful job, because as I said, I know them personally, and I think they would, and I hope they all run in November. But I would really like to support Melinda in any way I can, because I think with her experience and her education, not only in economics, I think she would be good as far as all the problems you have with budget. But I just think that she would lend a fresh perspective to this council that maybe hasn't ever been seen in a long, long time, and I think that we should all support her wholeheartedly. And I think that new ideas and just a new start, I think, is a great way. So, I would support Melinda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. All right, we got one more coming up here.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Diane Guadagnolo. I know most of you. A lifetime resident of Escalon, my husband and I, and business about 40 years here in Escalon. Tonight, I'm here to just highly recommend Casey for the vacant seat on your council. I've known Casey for quite a few years now. I serve on leadership with him at Heritage Church, and my husband served under his leadership on the mission field in Alaska last summer. Casey serves in all kinds of different areas, and it usually entails leadership because he's good at it. He has a ton of integrity and is of high character, and he makes decisions very thoughtfully and very carefully. And one thing about Casey that I think is essential for anybody as a public servant is that he listens, and he does so while he is very kind, respectful, and he makes sure that he tries to hear. And he will do that. He will make sure the constituent feels represented and listened to, and I think that's super important for people on the council. I think he really understands this community, where we've been and where we want to go, and I just really think that he would be a great representative for the town of Escalon, and I think he would be a positive, productive member of your guys' team. I also agree that you have a hard decision tonight. You've got a couple of great candidates that I didn't know were going to be here, and so I hope that you will consider them all very carefully. And I thank you guys all for your service. I know that's not an easy seat to sit in. So, just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harrison Grossi. I'm not too good at this public speaking thing, but I'd just like to say, as a person that has grown up here, my family's grown up here, been here since the 20s, and I'm not really here for any candidate, I'm just, I'd just like to have the candidates that are here make sure, well, not make sure, just, what's it called? Look at keeping Escalon a smaller town, you know, and I just really enjoy living in a small town like this, and, like I said, have a lot of history here, and I just like that to be in their minds, you know?
How old are you?
I am 20.
20?
Yeah.
Couple of years you can run, huh?
I don't live in town, I live just outside the city.
Oh, well, all right.
But I've worked here, you know, I'm sure you guys seen me.
Sure, thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else like to speak before we move on? Just have your name, please.
Danny Fox. Yeah, actually, I got several phone calls, a couple of them from out of county about, am I going to throw my hat in? My name in the hat. I thought about it, and I thought, well, the way I read it is that I could probably just come here and throw my name in the hat, say I want to be considered, and then it'd be just very kind of short, like Walt. He'd do a good job. I like to say that what's impressed me about tonight, in relationship to the past way this is done, I think it's, next time we have a same situation, get it out there quick, candidates tonight, come down to the City Council, maybe have a public hearing, might end up getting as many candidates rather than just the normal appointees from the council. All the candidates, I think, could be really good. They're all local. Of course, Walt served for a number of years. Somebody's little, Waterford, Walt, the former chief from Waterford, and status office county deputy, they're FBI N.A. graduates, so they can't be all that bad. Andy, I've known him for a long time, since he's grown up, but shortly about the time I heard that Jeff was going to resign, retire, and move on, something different, just so happens about three or four months before that, someone had been talking to me about my experiences on the council and asking a few questions and was interested. I'm interested in that, in a position on the council. And so, that's one of the reasons I decided not to throw my hat in, not the main reason. So, I'm here to wholeheartedly support someone I think is from the community, they have a degree in economics, they've had their eye on this position for quite some time, and the appointment came up. That person did not hesitate to get their name in to be considered. And so, I wholeheartedly support Melinda Walker. Thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
I forgot one comment.
Of course.
You may have noticed that when you asked her at all, that she was going to get an appointment, if that's the case, or she's going to run in November, she's probably thinking about it. I can tell you she's going to run in November.
Well, thank you for being her mouthpiece. All right. Is there anyone else out there who'd like to come up and speak before we move on here? All right. Well, listen, I want to thank everyone this evening for coming down. It's been a pleasure to listen to every one of you and see the interest that's in this community. I'm hoping that whoever doesn't get selected this evening will have the same energy and interest come November, because that's when it's all off, all bets are off, everybody has a shot at it, and you get out there and you earn your position, and we'll find out how much the interest is really out there. I'm pretty excited about it. All right, thank you this evening for everything. I'm going to accept a motion now.
You know, I almost wish that we could do something like sometimes where you just draw ballots.
Draw out of the hat?
Yeah, well, not, well, almost, because I tell you what, we're looking at the future of this council right here. We're looking at you guys, that you're going to be the future of this council and the future of this town right here. So, it almost becomes such an arbitrary decision that, you know, you're right, we can't make a bad decision.
Not really. No.
And so, you know, like I say, personally, I think I'm probably ready to move, and I think probably the only thing we can do is just start going down the slate, what, majority vote?
I have a question, a couple of questions before we do that.
You can, you could do it either way. Excuse me, one sec. You can do that, or you can have further discussion amongst yourselves, obviously, in open, and probably come to a consensus and then make your motion, or it's however you want to actually complete this process.
It's kind of weird talking about these people right in front of us.
It's transparency.
So, my question, if I may be allowed, when Mayor Alves said he believes he had a position who we accepted their candidacy, is that person here tonight? Mayor Alves?
It's possible, yeah.
Who is that candidate?
That candidate could be anybody out there, because I had more than one that we were going to pick. It wasn't just one.
You said, "We believe we have an individual who we believe has accepted the position." I'm asking you, who is that individual, and are they here tonight? Because you were speaking for all of us up here.
I wasn't speaking for all of us.
You said "we."
Let me get something straight here. First of all, you're out of order.
How? How am I out of order?
Because we are moving through a process, and you're interrupting our process. As far as who's here this evening...
No, I'm not.
I selected any of these people. We were told by, we had a couple people call in, or not call in, but I was told, a couple people were interested. I said, "Fine, those people would be fine." But as it turns out, we have a lot better selection, we have a lot more, and we're going to go with the selection we have this evening to pick from.
So, is the individual, you said, "We have believed has accepted the position," are they here this evening?
Well, no, he's not, because the person I selected, for your information...
The person you selected?
For your, I selected, yeah, that is exactly correct. Who I selected to fill the position I was going to bring to the council for their approval, and that person was Gary Haskin, because he was a previous council member who had the experience that we felt we could sure help out. That's who the individual was. Okay, now, I will accept a motion for the deal.
So, we're not going to make a motion right now, because I think we're going to have some discussion.
Are you going to have a discussion?
I think we almost all just go down the list and see who gets the majority vote.
All right. So, I think that, from my perspective, keeping with my statement, that I do not want to appoint somebody to this council that has, one, has, first of all, I want somebody new. I'd like somebody that has a new voice. I'd like somebody that is, has a fresh perspective, a new perspective on politics, somebody that frankly has invested in the community with their children and the rec department. So, with that being said, I have two candidates in mind that I would like to discuss, and that is Melinda Walker and Casey Ryan. Those are the two that I am considering tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, now...
We really complicated this.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to appoint Andy Hagan to the temporary position.
Very good. Do we have a second?
No.
Yes, we do. Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Very good. We have a new selection. I want to thank everybody for coming down this evening. Thank you very much.
And by the way, the rest of you... And by the way, the rest of you guys, please
Should all be upset.
Please run in the fall.
All right.
I'm not upset about anybody, I considered everybody, Peter, so walk and discuss if you like.
Take your time, everybody, please.
Are we, are we off? Are we off? Are we off?